I make the call to order under regularly scheduled meeting for this evening. Please stand in public allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
The records will show that Mr. John Collagen is absent this evening. All right, any motion for adoption of the agenda tonight? Mr. Christopher, second, Mr. Helm, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next, we have comments from the audience. Up first, we have Kennedy Webb.
Hi, my name is Kennedy Webb. I'm a junior at Fort Zuma West High School, where I am a member of the nationally-ranked varsity dance team. I have a 4.3 GPA, and I am interested in attending either the Ohio State University or the University of Minnesota to pursue psychology, specifically sports and performance psychology. At Fort Zuma West, only two psychology courses are offered: General Psych, which is an introductory level class, and AP Psychology, which I'm currently taking. Entering my senior year, I will have satisfied all of the graduation requirements for my school, with the exception of one English credit. This will allow me the opportunity to enroll in part-time attendance at my school, requiring that I only compete, complete four hours each day. However, because I am a student athlete, the Missouri State High School Athletics Association requires me to be enrolled in at least six hours. On top of this, I have two to three hours of dance team practice and three to four hours of dance studio training every single day. For this reason, I would like to maximize my class time by taking classes that allow me to earn college credit for the future, as this will help me as I transition into collegiate student-athlete. At the present time, my only options for this are AP classes or the dual-credit classes offered through Missouri Baptist and Utesle. I've already taken multiple AP and college credit classes, and those that are offered that I haven't taken don't align with my academic interests and future career pursuits. It seems like a waste of my school year to take irrelevant or blow-off classes, when I've worked so hard to complete my required credits in order to take challenging classes that I will truly enjoy. Because of my specific interest in psychology, I would like the opportunity to take more specialized psychology classes, such as adolescent abnormal and social psychology. These courses are currently offered at St. Charles Community College, which also partners with several of the other local school districts, including Brant's Towne, Wentzville, Orchard Farm, Wright City, Warrington, and St. Charles. These districts have already set this precedent by allowing their student athletes to take advantage of dual enrollment while satisfying Misha requirements through their articulation agreements. Currently, there is no established partnership for dual enrollment between St. Charles Community College and Fort Zuma. Students in our district are allowed to participate in the dual enrollment program, but it does not count towards Misha eligibility. I'm asking you to consider establishing this partnership so that the student athletes of the Fort Zuma School District are afforded the same opportunities as our counterparts in neighboring districts. I cannot see any way that allowing student athletes to go above and beyond would be detrimental to the students or to our district. I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to further explore my academic interests to gain college credit and to still participate in my varsity sport for my senior year. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, we have Tom Emmons.
My name's Tom Emmons, for those of you that don't know me. Because I didn't actually plan on saying too much, but guys, I spent time up here on this board, and one of the big things for those of you that know me that really, really, I guess, let's say, bothered me was that I left without having the ability to help our staff get the kind of raises, the increases, that they so desperately deserve. Tonight, you guys will vote on the salary schedule, and frankly, I just want to congratulate everyone on this board, our staff members, our district as a whole, for the work that you guys have done. It's really, it's amazing, was able to look at the schedule, really impressed and proud of the work that all of you have done. So, had a chance to be here tonight, and I just wanted to come up and celebrate that with all of you, and express my appreciation for the work that you guys have done the last year. Thank you.
Next, we have our recognition.
Thank you, Erica. First item of recognition is just to point out again the artwork that we have displayed this month. In particular, this group we are looking at is a mixture of some of our different middle schools, so you have Debrae Middle, North Middle, South and West Middle. Again, just to comment on the quality of the work and the age group that you're looking at, a lot of these are first-time projects for students, so when you look at it from that context, it really stands out. So just wanted to take a minute for that first item of recognition. And then our second item of recognition, as many of you know, we have Zoom Care in Fort Zuma Old School District. Zoom Care is our employee health clinic, and it is celebrating its fifth-year anniversary. And so we thought this was a good opportunity to recognize both a valuable program in our district, but also, more importantly, the people that work within that program. Our staff really respond to the access they have to caring, quality medical professionals, and those are the folks that we have with us tonight. So Eileen Bresnahan from our benefits department is going to come up, tell you a little bit more about the program, and also introduce the folks we have with us tonight. So, take it away, Ellen.
Good evening, board members. I have brought my favorite friends with me from Zoom Care. So I wanted to introduce them and everything, and just kind of explain to you guys again how great Zoom Care is doing for our staff and has continued to do. So we have Dr. Brownfoot here, she joined us about almost three years ago now. We had, we hired her on as our MD for the staff. Sue Ifrig, who has been our family nurse practitioner the entire time, she's been with us since our little baby was born. Then we have Wendy Bone, she is one of our newer medical assistants, and she's been with us just under a year or so now. And then Danielle, she has been with us for four years, and we actually stole her from Barnes Care. She was at the other reception desk, and she came over to us. And then Jane Meyer, she has been with us, working alongside of Pat, as well as Tom, our broker, that would kind of help to get this whole thing up off the ground and everything. So, I'm very glad to have them here with me tonight and everything, and to honor them. Just to give you guys a little bit of information and everything, the Zoom Care, overall, for the whole five years, has had over 4.8% out of five stars. So our staff are continually loving and really enjoying the care that they're getting from these fine ladies behind me and everything. So, they definitely, there are hardly any negatives. Usually, if there is a negative, it might just be like someone who thinks, you know, WebMD has the answer, instead of these lovely people. But honestly, it's been a great, a great thing for our staff, for sure. So far, I'll just give you a little bit of statistics, we've had over 31,000 visits at Zoom Care in the five years. And then we've provided 29, over 2,900 flu shots, we've done over 1,500 flu tests, we've given over 2,100 COVID vaccines as well, and labs are astonishing, 25,000 labs that have been drawn at Zoom Care. So that has saved our health insurance a ton, as well as our staff, our out-of-pocket expenses and everything, since we had to raise that deductible five years ago. And the great, one little tidbit that we have is the x-rays there, too, we've had over 1,400 x-rays done there as well. So same thing as well, helping our staff to save their out-of-pocket expenses, and to get it all done in a one-stop shop. So definitely, I have thoroughly enjoyed myself whenever I've had to use them, they've always been great. And I hope that if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it, but Zoom Care really has done a great job for our district and our, and our healthcare plan as a whole, so, yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next item is the presentation by Cordigan Clark. Our architect, it's very exciting to get to kind of talk about projects that are upcoming, and how we're going to start to spend some of that money allocated that the voters supported us with, with the bond issue. So Lisa's going to introduce our speakers tonight, and we'll walk through two projects that we have on the docket.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Myers. Yes, tonight, we have Rick Piesker and Greg Goble with Cordigan Clark, and they're going to go through the Mike Clemens Center and the North High School. Mike Clemens, just so you know, we're expecting bids next week on that, and then we're hoping North High will bring something to you in April. So I'll turn it over to Lisa, gentlemen.
Yeah, we're really excited to be here tonight and give you an update on these two projects. The first project, Mike Clemens, was actually a project that we worked on with you guys eight years ago, and was completed in 2015, so it's exciting to be able to see the growth and continue to work on that project again. So again, starting off with Mike Clemens, this is, everybody should be familiar with this, but the project area that we're working on is kind of on the north end of the existing building there, behind the Jason School and the bus parking area. And then this is just an overall site plan, so we're adding a wing, a similar classroom wing to what you have there on the south end. The goal is needing to get K through 12, all-age kids in here. And then we're extending, expanding the parking around on the north end. We are making a connection to the bus parking area there that allows for fire truck access, rather than connecting it to the school loop there. And it's also potentially a way during construction that contractors can get in there and work on the addition without disturbing school.
It's nice to know that the way the new wing has been added, another one can be added later, so if the program continues to grow, we have wiggle room to do that. I think a server needs long-term.
Again, this is another view, use the site plan here, rotated the other way. Again, the existing building is approximately 22,000 square feet, we have 44 cars right now, we're expanding the building by 13,000 square feet, adding 31 cars, and we're, as part of this project, a little connected piece there, the current building code requires a storm shelter. We did design some hardened rooms in the original building, there were the
Refocus rooms.
Refocus rooms. And, but, so the centerpiece there is actually the storm shelter designed for the whole population, the students and the staff. And as you'll see here in a minute, there's some restrooms and some other things that are part of that. And this is, this is a closer view of the floor plan, again, the wing on the right-hand side there, it's similar, it's laid out a little bit differently, but it has the same types of rooms and classrooms that you currently have in your building. The connection piece there is, we're going through one of the restrooms, the girls restroom, that's how you get from the existing building into the new addition. And then that orange piece again in the middle is the storm shelter. There's some overhead door openings there that makes the room very open during normal use, but in a storm event, those doors would close down, and you have a man door that if you need to get in or out of there, you can do that.
It's worth noting, too, that the storm shelter thing is a requirement for all of your buildings at this point, and so part of the things that needs to be considered is that costs are rising as a result of that, because they're expensive things to build. The structure is different, the mechanical systems are different, the windows are different, and then there's pieces that are driven, a generator, for example, has to be there so that the building continues to run if the storm occurs. So this is a relatively modest one of those, the other buildings are much more significant because you've got to get all the kids in the building, so it's a relatively large space.
And so we are adding a few restrooms in there, because we're displacing the one restroom as you can enter the addition there. And in the existing building there, you'll see some areas that are shaded, the front lobby area are renovating. Currently, there's a reception desk there that's open, and you had a desire to make that more secure, so we're adding a wall and a window, it's got security glazing, so that the people that are coming into the building are protected, the receptions and the people that are running the front desk there. And then there's another door, the re-adding, that can be locked off, so you can really keep that front desk to be all secure. Your existing cafeteria there is in the middle, it had an S-shaped little wall that was put in in the original design, but there was a desire to take that out and open that up, so that's, that room is being renovated as part of the project as well. Other than that, the existing building is staying as-is, and then we continue on here, we have some photos and
By the way, it's worth noting that the original building has been well-received by everybody I've talked to, and it's held up well. We know it's heavy traffic and some, some rough goings-on at times that occur there, but generally speaking, everything is held up well, and that counts, because we're going to replicate to a large degree the finishes that we use there. So the new building will look very similar, the materials will be the same, we'll change a couple of things out that we learned a few things about, but generally speaking, if you like the first part, you'll like the second, because it's, it's an extension of the idea.
And then the photo on the bottom right, I put an arrow there just to, if you're familiar with the building, you've been in the building, that's basically where we're going to make that connection, and you're going to kind of continue on into the new addition.
And it's interesting, because the building was, we deliberately made it feel more residential, so it was welcoming, welcoming to the people that are approaching it. The new building looks almost identical, the same kind of gables and the same organizational principles, so you'll understand it as well. Again, the finishes were simple and well-thought-through, so they were durable. The reception desk that Rick was talking about is right there, that's going to be blazed, so that the kids won't have access to the materials that are there at the desk. I think, generally speaking, most of the finishes are going to replicate these in the other space, and we'll, we'll show you a few of those. This is the building, you can see the original building off to the left side, the little pergola that's at the front, that's the front door of the building. The new extension you can see is masked exactly the same way the old one was. It's not quite as tall, because there's a multipurpose room in the original building that's a little bit taller, so that roof pitch is a little higher and steeper. This one, though, is very consistent with the way we approached the first. This is the opposite side of the building, again, all the windows and everything behave the same way, so it'll, it'll look as if the whole thing was designed at once. There's a rendering from an oblique angle there, the parking area that we've created is off to the right side, out of view, but essentially, they look like partner buildings there.
So that's Mike Clemens, any question on that, or we can continue on to the high school? Again, this is a high school site. Yeah, the two areas highlighted in yellow are our two additions, we're doing a multipurpose storm shelter addition on the front of the building there, and then the smaller addition is an expansion to the cafeteria. We've got your student population here. By code, you're only required to do a storm shelter that houses the occupants of the addition, but we're designing this to house all the occupants of the school, so we, we looked at the student count and your staff and made sure that that's going to accommodate that.
That's an important thing, I mean, I think storms will be coming more frequent, and if you harden part of the building, because that's what the code requires you to do, and then somebody gets hurt later, that they couldn't get into the room because it was either too far away or not big enough, I think that's a big problem, and everybody seems to have agreed with that, so we're accounting for all the kids in the school.
And this is a, this is a floor plan of the cafeteria expansion, so currently have about 400, maybe a little bit more, students that are in a lunch, and they're occupying the cafeteria, and then because of the high occupant load there, you happen to use the gym lobby, so there is a desire to add this addition to kind of eliminate that. So what the addition is about 2,300 square feet, and it has seating for about 140 kids, and there's two connective openings there that get you into the addition. It's also shaped the way it is because we needed to allow access to that kind of courtyard that you see to the south there, we need to be able to get in there for maintenance reasons and access of that area.
And before you go on, we're still midstream on some of the color choices and a few of the materials, so if you see one that doesn't sit well with you, it probably doesn't sit well with me either, and we're going to sort through that, and then we'll be back in front of these people, though, and we'll make the right decisions. So the red chairs, for example, will be one of them, and you'll see
That really bothers me.
He's just giving you a warning, warning ahead of time.
Well, I don't mind red.
There you go.
There you go. So it seems like a lot of red, that's not your school color, and so we probably would adjust that. But overall, I think the image conveys that it's a nice dining room, there's plenty of daylight in there, there's a mixed opportunities for how the seating can occur, so the kids can sit in the kind of seatable chair that they want to sit in, we'll mix that up a little bit, but I think overall, it's a pretty attractive space for them to be in.
And those two areas off in the distance, there's a built-in counter with some bench type seating, and there's one that's kind of in the foreground, too, as well, so there's a good, a mix of different types of seating, and it overlooks into that courtyard outdoor space where a lot of kids eat out there currently.
He's talking about the places where the brown paneling is, there's a bar there with stool seating there, so, and places to plug in a computer if you have one, so it's, uh-huh.
Will you have to enter this space to be able to get into the front of the gym, or will there be
No, this is a separate piece entirely, it's off to the side. It's a standalone, it opens from the cafeteria, the existing cafeteria, and then there's, there's another door there, so that the egress requirements are not
You can still get into the same doors that you currently can, get into the gym, get into the cafeteria.
There's an outdoor entrance that I think we'll make it clear.
Yeah, so that there's a
So we intend to upgrade that area out in front, there's already some benches and chairs that are out there, but we're going to organize it a little bit differently and, and make it someplace nice to sit. That's another view from a little bit of an angle, you can see that the opening that Rick was talking about is in the back, that's to service mechanical equipment, it's back in there without having to go through, through or over the building. Over means a boom, that's expensive, this is much less expensive to do.
Okay, this is the multipurpose gym addition in the front of the building, so currently, where the yellow and red come together, that's your existing front door, so this addition is out in front of that, in front of your library. The yellow and green is the new lobby, the way to get into the building, and the green is the office area. The large multipurpose room to the gym is off to the right there, there's, that whole rectangle box is the storm shelter, including a little piece sticking up there is a sprinkler room, so that's the hardened building that is the storm shelter, and then we have the restrooms that we need per code for that, and then there's several storage closets, so it's just a setup to be, again, multipurpose, that you could use this for various different events, people could come in, pull out what they need out of their closet, set up whatever they need to do, put it back, so you can really use this however you would like. We think for evening events, this works really well, too, because this whole addition can be locked down from the rest of the school, so if you want to rent this out to somebody without having to have access to the, to the whole school, they can, they have access to the room, they have restrooms, and they pretty much have everything they would need.
It's essentially another gymnasium for you, we set up to operate that way. It's, the volume has been managed so that you can do anything you do in the other gym in here, basketball, volleyball, whatever it is. It's a multipurpose room, but it'll serve a very specific sports need if you need it. And like he says, it can be operated as a standalone piece, you don't have to let the people into the rest of the school.
And there, there is some renovation, this included in the base bid, we will have some alternate bids to maybe take that renovation out. Actually, the areas, square footage of renovation is a little bit more than the addition itself, so, like, for example, the library there, it's shaded in red, that's a light renovation area, we're proposing to replace carpeting, paint the walls, that sort of thing, and then the main corridor that gets you back to the office, this cut off the page there, that would get upgraded with new finishes and lighting and ceiling, and there's also a smaller renovation that happens to the office itself, somebody, people that are currently in the office would move into this office space up front, so there's some rooms and conference rooms, and some other things to get redone in that area as well.
You'll get an SRO officer up at the front door, who can watch who's coming and going. The floor finishes, we're going to change, so the people that are actually going to go further into the building will have an understanding of where they're going to be in their office, so the floor finishes will kind of be the yellow brick road in case, and so it'll, I think it'll help the way the thing flows a lot better as well. So again, it's, it's another gymnasium effectively. The only thing I take issue with in this image, and again, we're working on some of the color things, I think we want to, where that school graphics component goes, I think we want to mirror the windows that are on the other side of the building, the reason being that a sports facility like that, if you're introducing flair on one side and not another, then there's no balance to it, and it's going to affect how the athletes work in the space. I think we need to balance that in that way, but we'll have to talk about that, make sure we get that right. But overall, it's, it's going to be a great multipurpose room that will serve those needs for you, and keep the kids safe when something happens.
We do have some bleachers, you see on the left-hand side there, and the restrooms and the storage rooms I mentioned earlier, you see those on the right-hand side. Currently, I think we're thinking the floor in this is a wood gym, but I think we might do an alternate for sports flooring, that's something we're working on still.
This is a place to band, and people can practice indoors as well, so there's a lot of different ways to put these leaves. This one is just inside the entry, and you're looking at that first space inside the door that will connect back to the other part of the building, so you can see it's generous enough that you can have a surge of people in and out of there. It also, this space also works as a pre-function space for the gym, so if you have a big evening event, you know how that works, people don't always want to be there when the things are being banged on, sometimes they like to go out in the hallway and use the restroom and then talk to their friends, it's kind of a fellowship space, so you have it available for that purpose as well.
You see a couple of niches in the background there, there's some screens that are built in there, and then the one on the back wall, there's actually a display case that's built in there, and then the two doors, that takes you into the existing building.
This is the courtyard space that's between the old, that's the library on the left side you're looking at, so we're doing some modest work there, we opened up one of the center bays to put a door from the library to the space. This courtyard in the area is going to be secured by a gate further out, so kids can actually get into this space and be secure, there's nobody, there's no way for somebody else to get back there unless they have the opportunity to open the gate, and it will be locked. So a secure area, it, it leads to, the area furthest in there is the connection to the new corridor space that you just saw a minute ago, the library is to the left, and then there's, we put some benches and some landscaping materials in there to soften that up a little bit back there, so it's a nice interior courtyard, is what you've got. This is a view approaching what will be the new front door. Again, some of those color choices are not quite what I'm thinking, but it's close. It's generous, you can see where the front door is, there's actually a flagpole that's not continued, that's not included in this, that's going to be how the canopy sort of works, so imagine the American flag over there a little bit on the left side as well. The box, the big box on that side, that's your storm shelter, and we found a really efficient way to do it, it's going to be pre-cast concrete, so it's fairly easy to erect, it gets built in a shop, it'll look good, and then we've done some interesting things with, next slide? Next one. So, part of this is a little bit misleading, because the metal components on there is something we've done a little bit differently, but the key is that the, the elements that are cast into that concrete in the shop, one of them is a graphic signage component that's over there on the right side, and it says "North," so there's some elements that are cast into that concrete that will give it some visual interest. There's also a texture to it, so as the sun passes over, it will look different at different times of the day, and then we use that canopy piece there to tell people where the theater is, because we kind of masked the theater a little bit in the way we did this. I think at the end of the day, it was a simple way to solve it that was cost-effective, it gets you the storm shelter, and it's going to look nice, too. And that's what we got, so any questions, we can answer for you.
A question, the multipurpose room, I assume we used it for PE classes as well, could, so my question is, I didn't necessarily, are there locker rooms in that area?
We have not provided locker rooms, but there's some space in that bar there that if there was a limited need for that, we could find some room for it, it hadn't come up as a thing.
I don't think the general use for PE classes will be in there, it's, they may use it
intended for that.
Yeah, that they may use it for other functions, group, getting bigger groups together during the school day, but we're trying to keep them in, in the regulations for that.
We had Buddy involved in the planning, too, so Buddy and Twistle had a chance to see what the plans were, so.
There is enough storage in that bar adjacent to it, the bar adjacent is not full height, it's a lower piece, and I think there may be a couple mechanical units up on that roof where we hid them, but if, most of the materials you need to have that thing work are going to be available right there in the storage spaces. Thank you very much, we're glad to hear you. Thank you.
Making a motion to approve the consent agenda that you have in front of you? Helm, again, more on a, say aye, any opposed? And we have our financial reports.
Good evening, members of the board, I direct your attention to the financial summary, which we'll hopefully pull together, the financial statement along with the investment schedule, revenue expenditure reports. Fund balances for January totaled $198,854,370.19. Of that balance, $33.2 million was reserved for debt service, $60.3 million was reserved for capital projects, which Lisa, you can just tell, is ready to spend it on as best as she can. $5.8 million was reserved for food service, $2.6 million reserved for student activities, that left $97 million for operations. As shown on the investment schedule, $203.4 million was invested at the end of the month, and I would point out that although our balance is only $198.9 million, $203 was, .4 was invested, and that's because we, I'll release all those checks, they're sitting out there in the drawer, until you guys approve the, approve that release tonight, so. Revenues for the month of January totaled $65,931,992.37. Revenue in January is by far, it's our second-largest month, and that's because we also get a large chunk of our tax revenue in January, we get the lion's share in December, we get a big chunk in, in January as well. Year-to-date revenues are running $9.4 million more than last year in total, local revenues are up by $9.7 million, and as we talked about, the, a big chunk of this is $5.6 million more in local property tax collections, which is budgeted. budgeted. $900,000 more in Prop C sales tax receipts. Prop C continues to grow, and that's a good thing, as sales taxes in our state are growing. And actually, I know that the state just submitted a supplemental appropriation because they don't even have enough appropriated for what's being collected or what they're projecting to be collected. And they have to appropriate that before they can disperse it. So hopeful that they pass that and we get that extra money. And I think that's going to be maybe another half a million dollars for the district, so that's more good news. $1.3 million more in investment earnings. $2 million more in food service revenues. That's a little offset, which I'll talk about in a second, because our federal revenues for food service are down. That's because we had to start charging for meals again. So that's where those, that's up by the $2 million in food service. State revenues are up by $2.2 million. This is entirely due to the full funding of the transportation formula. Finally, federal reserves are down by $2.5 million, and a big chunk of that is due to the end of that free meal program that reduced federal revenues by $2.3 million so far this year, and partially due to the timing of some federal program payment requests that we need to get submitted and get paid for. So expenses for the month of January totaled $19,676,248.78. For the month of January, the district has spent $17.2 million on salaries and benefits. That number is a little inflated for the month because we had the tenants incident, which was actually just paid out January to our both certified and support staff. $1 million was, or $1.1 million was spent on purchase services, $1 million on supplies, and $366,000 on capital construction. Compared to last year at this time, expenses are up about $5.2 million. $2 million of that increase is related to salary and benefit increases. $1.2 million of the increase was related to purchase services, which has been really driven up by contract transportation. We have an increase of out-of-district special education placement placements. And as you may recall, we had a very large claim for some flooding incident at the lower level of South High, which is about half a million dollars of that increase as well. Supply costs are also higher by about $700,000, and this is really due to several different things. Our paper costs are up. In addition, we had some, there's kind of a lag in the paper purchasing. We had some paper left over from when COVID hit, and we shut down, so we didn't have to buy as much that year. So now we're back in, back in the saddle with the paper usage again. So that's part of the paper cost. In addition, the per-case cost is elevated quite, quite some, too. We had an increase in student activities and an increase in our custodial supply cost and usage, and also had a purchase of some curriculum materials for letters training, which has also inflated the cost over last year. And the last thing, capital costs are up year-to-date by $923,000 as we, as Lisa completes more bond finance projects. Does anybody have any questions about financial reports?
Any questions?
I just pray approval.
All right. If not, any motion to approve the financial reports that are presented? Mr. Marion, second. Tom, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have old business.
Thank you. Two items under old business, both for Lisa. First one is bleacher placements recommendation. She's going to walk us through.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Myers. We had identified that we needed to replace the bleachers at North High and South High in their large gyms. So in doing so, I got bids from Carroll Seating to replace those using the co-op called Sourcewell, which meets all our bidding requirements that we're, that we have to fulfill. We have used Carroll Seating for a lot of different projects, and they are recommending putting Hussey bleachers in those gyms, which is what we have at all our other schools as well. In addition to replacing the bleachers one-for-one at each of the schools, North High, we're adding a couple of secondary bleachers on the ends to give them a little bit more seating capacity since they are growing a little bit. The total quote to do bleachers at both facilities is $610,801.64. The bleachers do come with a 10-year warranty on the structural components and other five years on all the other components. If anybody has any questions about this, I would be glad to answer. But our plan is to try to get them ordered and get this done during summer. We're kind of running on a crunch on timeframe on that.
Any questions? All right. If not, any motion to approve the bleacher replacements recommendations that are presented? Christopher, second. Mr. Helms, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
The next project we have is at South High on the football field. Their lighting is original, and the foot candle have, we've had it measured, is not sufficient for what they need. So we have gone through the buying co-op as well to get musco lighting installed there. It's a complete musco lighting, is doing the furnishing materials and the labor through the subcontractor. And the whole project for the lights to replace them is $379,000, and it comes with a 25-year warranty on material and labor. And again, if we approve this, I can get this done during summer before football season starts next fall.
Any questions? All right. If not, any motion to approve the lighting for the South High football field? Tom, second. George, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
More business?
Thank you. First item under new business is a Board of Education resolution that we're asking you to take up opposing open enrollment. I want to give you a little bit of context for this, and certainly happy to answer any questions. But big picture, open enrollment has been a fairly hot topic issue in Missouri going back now several years. And at the core of it, it's flexibility in different forms, either to move schools within district unencumbered or to change districts based on parent direction. There are some obvious complexities that go into that. The reason we're bringing this tonight is currently at the state level, there are three different bills being considered related to open enrollment. Each of them has slightly different elements to it. One's in the House and two are in the Senate. But at the core of them, it involves decisions that would change a little bit of an element of local control, but also have the possibility to open up enrollment within our buildings or across the district that would not necessarily be within our control. So the main reasons that I think we would want to ask the board to stand in opposition to that, one is the predictability of being able to staff and fund appropriately both your buildings and your district when you are constantly attempting to determine if enrollment is going to change by 30 students, 50 students, 100 students. You can see the challenge in doing that on a small scale by one building, let alone an entire district. So that's, that's the primary concern in being able to make sure, in addition, that if you have some of that movement, your ability to recoup or make staffing changes and reduce might be impaired based on the ability of students who move in certain grade levels, but not enough that you could reduce staffing overall. So there, that's kind of the big element as it relates to the district. Again, depending on which action you look at, there's also a separate issue of when students travel across different districts, the funding that would follow them in its current form would be tied to the state adequacy target, which would be about $6,300. For us, our per-pupil expenditures far exceed that. So if we're hosting a student from another district and receiving that funding, but we're paying $4,000 to $6,000 more per student on top of that, you can see the funding inequities that come in there. And lastly, separately, as a, as a public school district and supporting other public school districts in our region, open enrollment can represent a threat to smaller school districts in terms of having to consolidate or numbers being reduced. And we want to make sure that we're in agreement in supporting what those small districts do at the local control level. So those are some oversights, but it is the board's discretion. You have a copy of the resolutions. I would just be asking you to approve that. If approved, we would then submit it to our representatives. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? All right. If not, any motion to approve the resolution for open enrollment?
I would approve.
Mr. Marion, second. George, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right. Next item, DDRB application for funds. We bring this back to you annually. Dr. Smith is going to walk us through it, or is going to walk us through it. So if you want to go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Myers. Good evening, board. As Dr. Myers said, we bring this to you each year. It's a minimal amount of money, $9,260, that we are applying for through the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board that would allow us to offset the costs for students with disabilities who attend childcare and need additional supports in order to attend. So with your approval, it would just allow us to access those funds if needed. So if you have any questions, I can entertain them. I just asked for you to approve that application.
Any questions? All right. If not, any motion to approve the application for the funds presented? Mr. Helms, second. Mr. Christopher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Next item is the E-Rate reimbursement recommendation from JV Meddy. This is specific to our firewall. With E-Rate, I always like to point out, E-Rate is a reimbursement program that we do for federal funding. In this case, it would be a 50% reimbursement through the E-Rate process. We use a vendor to do that, but JV is going to have the 50 for you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Myers. Good evening, members of the board. As Paul said, we are using, hopefully, E-Rate funds to help offset the cost of this project. E-Rate covers firewalls and network-related projects. So that's exactly what we're looking at here. Over the past five years, I've been asking you for maintenance and renewal licenses for our existing firewall. In one of the rare moves, firewalls have actually come down in cost. So what we're looking at this evening, based on the cost that we've gotten back, it will cost us roughly the same for us to buy a new firewall this year as it would to renew what we had been using previously. So what the benefit is in future years is renewal costs are always a percentage of the purchase cost. So we are looking at a future lower cost year over year as we deploy this. So we put a bid out, and we received three qualified bids from vendors that we've worked with before. The best cost, low cost, met all of the specifications that we had asked for, and can be completed in the timeframe that we're looking at. That low-cost vendor was Provision Data Solutions using a Fortinet Fortigate solution. It's a primary firewall plus a high availability secondary. So if the primary device goes down, we can continue to function. This will service everything that we need for the district. It would be installed in our data center downstairs, would occur over the summer, so there's no anticipated downtime for school. The actual cutover would happen after hours so that even the staff that are working over the summer would not be impacted. So my request this evening would be to review and approve the best solution, which is from Provision Data Solutions for a total cost of $122,152.
Any questions? All right. Matt, any motion to approve the E-Rate reimbursement recommendation? Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Marion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item, it's also JV, slightly more expensive. You'll walk us through the community fresh vendor recommendation.
So, so that cost savings that we just, yeah, so, right, yeah. It lasted so long. So this evening, I have for you our project 23001, which is the replacement of client devices for the district. The biggest component of this is the continuation of our one-to-one Chromebook program. We provide a Chromebook for every student. We hand new ones out to our students at sixth grade and ninth grade and use those and rotate throughout the four years of their service. So with that, this year, I have a number of different areas, and I'll just cover them one at a time. It's probably best to approve those one at a time if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll start at the top. Desktop. The scope of the deployment for desktops this year is high school performing arts and journalism and staff desktops throughout the district. So that'll be secretaries, clerks, those kind of locations throughout the entire district. So every school is impacted by this. The best overall solution has been provided by CDWG for a total cost of $457,726.70. Pretty straightforward, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any motion to approve CDWG?
Motion.
Tom, second. Christopher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Next up, we have a production desktop, which is really for industrial technology and engineering labs. Covers some of the project lead-away type classes that we have. In performing arts in the high schools, we're finding they're using those for film studies, which is video production, along with using some AutoCAD design sets and those kind of things. So with that in mind, best solution has been provided by Riverside Technologies for a total cost of $616,808.50.
If there's any questions, any motion to approve Riverside Technologies? Tom, second. George, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Next up, we have monitor with dock, which is kind of an unusual, there's not, actually a computer is part of this. But it's a docking station. We use it in our project lead-away app creator courses in middle schools. Students are able to use their own Chromebooks, and then they just go plug into that so they have a monitor, keyboard, and mouse. Makes it a lot easier for them to program when they can actually see their programming on a bigger screen. The teachers there have had a great deal of luck with connecting external devices, but this will make it quite a bit simpler to actually charge the devices while they're using those components as well. So with that in mind, best solution is from Dell Technologies for a total of $43,166.
So that's one monitor and dock.
Yeah, that's a monitor. Well, this is for all of our project lead-away labs. Yeah.
Want to make sure.
Yeah, no, no, no. That's a whole bunch of monitors. That one's going in my office.
And we're launching this one or something.
Right, yeah. No, no, this is a lot, this takes care of all of our middle school programs for project lead-away.
Any motion to approve Dell Technologies? Tom, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay. Biggest one we have on the list is Chromebooks. This is the, the devices that we hand to our incoming sixth and ninth graders. This year, we are, we spent a lot of time evaluating devices. We actually had our own bake-off. We had sample devices from Dell, Lenovo, HP Acer, Samsung, and Asus. And after reviewing that with our technicians and tech teachers and different folks in the district, it was determined that the Lenovo Chromebook was the best solution. One of the things with this design is actually a two-in-one design, which is not, we're, we're not so much focused on using it as a tablet, but what we found is the screens are made out of Gorilla Glass. So it changed the variable in terms of maintenance for the long run for us. So the number one issue we see in damage has been screens over the years, and we're hoping that adding that component makes a difference. Much more sturdy device, also has eight gigs of memory in it instead of four, and we're finding that students are doing more and more with their devices, and we're hoping this will help offset that extra horsepower that they're looking for. So with that in mind, our recommendation is for CDWG for a Lenovo Chromebook. This will cover all of our incoming sixth and ninth graders for a total of $1,435,137.45.
Any questions? All right. If not, any motion to approve CDWG? Mr. Marion, second. Mr. Christopher, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Okay. Smallest one, just real quick, Chromebook, but 14-inch. This is for our cashier stations in the high schools for the coffee bars. They are in a location where we can't put a desktop, our traditional device, to be able to check out. So they need something, a Chromebook is a lower-cost device, has a big enough screen for them if we do the 14-inch model. So this is just for the high school coffee bars. Best bid from Dell Technologies for a total cost of $1,384.77.
I believe it's four.
Yeah. So they're about $400 each, something there.
Any motion to approve Dell Technologies? Mr. Helms, second. Mr. Moore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Last item I have is a Chromebox. This is for our cafeteria cashier stations throughout all of our schools. Our goal with this is to provide a device that is, that runs quick. Chromeboxes can do that for us, and they're very simple. But in this case, they are also touchscreen displays for point-of-sale to increase the speed to get students through the line in order to check them out for lunch. So with that in mind, best solution is from Riverside Technologies for a total cost of $32,838.56.
Any questions? All right. If not, any motion to approve Riverside Technologies? Mr. George, second. Mr. Christopher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, JV. All right. Next item is the 2023, '20 through 2026 professional agreement salary amendment. I just do want to take a minute participating in negotiations to express my thanks to our partners in that process. Once again, a great deal of communication and openness and willingness to sit down and talk about these are the needs, both with respect to this and then the calendar. So Dr. St. Dyer is going to walk us through the actual agreement. You want to take it from there?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Myers. Good evening, members of the board. You do have in your packet a memo from me outlining Uh, you do have in your packet a memo, uh, from me outlining the, um, proposed salary schedule for really the next three years for, for our teachers, which was an offshoot of our win-win negotiation to the two subcommittees, salary and calendar. And I'm going to speak with you a little bit about the salary, um, component of that. And so, uh, the upshot is that we have a three-year agreement that we're presenting to you tonight, uh, that is representative of 7.1% increase for next year, 3.25% increase for '24-'25, and a 3.0% increase for '25-'26. Increases in the longevity steps, those teachers who have no step with which to move, uh, respectively, $2,000 next year, 1,500 the following year, and 1,000, um, the year after. Takes our base salary and, and provides, um, some good increases to that base salary over the next three years. We're at 40, just for reference sake, this year we're at 41,200 dollars for our base step one BA. So a brand-new teacher's coming out, uh, next year. We'd be at 43,000 for that same step, and, uh, 44,000 even the year after, 45,100 the following year. Uh, so we came to, uh, consensus on, on this proposal. As you have in your packets, uh, the Teachers Association sent it out for vote and was approved at 94% approval rate, uh, through, through the Teachers Association. And so with that, we, we bring this to you for final approval, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Not since we're going to approve this.
Any questions? All right. If not, any motion to approve the 2024, uh, all right, 2023 through 2026 professional? Mr. Christopher, second. Dr. Marion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
And then last item along those same lines is the 2024-2025 school calendar. Ms. Waters was involved in that negotiation process along with Mr. Moore. Um, Jen's going to walk us through the calendar for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. Jeremy and I chaired, uh, this calendar committee this year for '24-'25, so it's actually two years out. Um, worked with committee of teachers, um, went really, really well. The committee was pretty quickly able to put together two calendars that, um, we were both, both sides were very comfortable with. Um, the FCEA sent that out for a vote, and the teachers voted on calendar one. Uh, just a couple highlights, um, with that calendar. Um, we were able to move around some of those days the first week that teachers were back, um, which allowed building principals to see their teachers when they got into the buildings. So they were really excited about that. Provided a fall break, um, a nice fall break for all teachers. It's kind of tail end of Halloween, which will be good for a lot of people. Balanced semesters, uh, we matched up our spring break with all of the other St. Charles County districts, which, um, we continually hear is an important thing to have in our calendar. Uh, two weeks off at Christmas, and we are finishing that year the last week of May. Uh, it is after Memorial Day, but Memorial Day is really early that year. Uh, but we'll finish the last week of May, which gives us time to turn everything over for summer school. So, uh, really nice committee. I think it went well. I hope you all felt that way. And all we need is final approval.
Any questions? If not, any motion to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented? Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Helms, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Well, with that, we have our comments from the board. It's up to you, Jeremy.
All right. First, like comments, thank you for coming and thanking us because, um, I'm also excited about the salary agreement, and I wish we could do even more, of course, and we hope to in the future. So I know Dr. DeBrae and Paul and everybody that worked on that appreciate the work you've put in that, uh, and the association, of course. But there's been lots of good things. I'm enjoying the comprehensive school improvement plan committee. Um, I know what it's like to try and wrestle with calendars, so thank you, Jen and Jeremy, for doing that so I don't have to. That's, that's a hard one. Lisa, all the stuff you're doing with the bidding facilities, I appreciate that. Um, JB, all the stuff with technology, you guys put a lot of work into it. So bottom line, staff continues to work really hard, and that includes our teachers and our administrators, and I just want to appreciate that. The diversity committee, the respect committee, a lot of good things going on. So, uh, it makes me excited for the future. Now, I also want to appreciate the folks that are, um, uh, putting their hats in the ring to be board members. I know there's at least one here tonight. Is there another one? Well, Ms. Byrd is running, thank you for that. We need good people on the board. That's probably enough. I just, I'm, I'm feeling appreciative. I'm excited, so thank you all for all your work. And that includes you, Erica does a great job of being the president. You're working hard as board president, I appreciate that, too.
Mr. George?
Well, he got a bunch of them, but I mean, thanks for all your hard work on the.
Jeff Dair, Jeff Dove.
Thanks to everybody on, on all the committees. Uh, I know that's time out of your day to do that with all the different committees. Diversity committee was nice to be a part of it. At the end there, I got on overtime, we couldn't be there as much. But thanks to everybody's hard work. And, uh, happy fat Tuesday. Lazy lay bone tip tonight.
I'd also like to, uh, I'm very proud of the, uh, negotiations and calendars. It's, it's nice to be able to show the teachers how much we appreciate them, for them to know that they deserve that and that, and that we're able to do that. Uh, the Zoom care, I think, um, they do a great job. I think it's very important for our families in the district, and it, and it really does help out with the insurance cost and, and, uh, it's important in a lot of ways. So I'm glad to see that continue to, to be there and grow. And just, as always, thanks for the hard work. They just do a great job.
Mr. Moore?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, reiterating what everyone else said. Glad to see the, the negotiations went well. Getting to do something that, you know, we've all been, been on the board for a while, long, for a long time to try to make a big leap forward. And I think this was a really, uh, good opportunity to take that, uh, our chance to take that opportunity to do that. And so really good to see that calendar working out. Yeah, everyone's working hard in the school district. Things seem to be going really well. Uh, got to be part of the, uh, apprenticeship program meeting we had last week, I believe, again. If you haven't, check that out. Check out Fort Zuma Apprentice Program. It's going really, really well. Uh, Mr. Andy McCafferty's kind of heading that with Dr. Pat Brown. Um, just, uh, becoming a phenomenal group of, of individuals in that and company supporting in the school. It's really a neat project, and, uh, when I think about that project, I mean, it's, it's dear to me because we have some, we have five apprentices working at, at my company right now. I got to have lunch with them yesterday, it was really, really great. But I just know that that's one small piece of the great things that this school district does. And so thanks to everyone for all the hard work that they do.
Mr. Helms?
Well, I guess I don't know what's left, but, uh, give it a shot here. First of all, thanks to the speakers that came up, um, today and spoke. I think you, uh, that definitely says a lot as far as making the effort to, to take time out of your day to be here for that. Uh, thank you to all the nurses and the doctors that don't care just like everybody else did. They, I mean, that's so big for our district. It saves us so much money and allows us to redistribute that money in a lot more effective ways. That's definitely huge. Thank you, Lisa Kestner, for all your hard work with the North and South High. Uh, and the South High fields, I know they can be, you know, uh, exhausting to say the least. Laura Smith, thank you for your hard work. And you continue to service the, you know, the kids who need special services within the district. JB, awesome job, once again, thank you. And that's about me. Yeah, sorry. Other than that, thank you to everybody. It just, just keeps our district moving in a progressive way. Because I definitely think Fort Zuma is the top district in the county middle bias. But I think everything we do day-to-day, month-to-month is to make sure we stay there. And I think that salary, uh, agreement is huge for us, making sure we can keep, not just staff, but quality staff. It goes a long way, I think, when it comes to what, what our end product is, which is our kids. There's no dollar too, too big, as they say. That's all I got. Thank you.
I already said this about everyone, but I'll find something. Again, everybody who works with these committees are taking time out of their day, their night, coming from school, coming from other meetings. It is greatly appreciated and happy to do that. But I really enjoy it because the communication is so strong with everyone that we can sit and talk, and there's no animosity, and everybody has the same goal. And that's really important because you don't see that all over the place. And we finally, we did it. We had to make and move forward, and we have all wanted this for so long, and stupid COVID got in the way.